I want to call the Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, May 19th, 2021. Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
And myself, Joe Martin, present. Student activities, we haven't got back into that realm yet, so there aren't any. The second item on the agenda is a request for Cafeteria to bid supplies. And Brenda, that's an automatic, that's their budget, that's their supplies?
Correct. It is all out of the Food Services account, so it's not under school budget.
And, but the school committee opens the bid?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
More being referred to the Director of the Food Services to go through the process.
Procuring the process, second.
Motion's been made in second to grant the request to bid Cafeteria supplies.
Question?
Uh, Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Ms. Moynihan, so I see that she wants, so it's going to be posted to open them at the Finance and Law Subcommittee on June the 16th, I see that. So will we refer that to the administration at that point usually?
Correct.
And then that means we'll vote, we'll have to take the official vote. The recommendation will probably be at the July meeting. Is that going to be okay?
Yes, it will.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. We have a list of donations. And they are from, all from Richard Stock. And they're all earmarked for the Family Welcome Center. And let's see, we have two soccer balls, six basketballs, two footballs, two Grand Slam T-ball bats sets, two T-ball gloves, three packs of tennis balls, eight-pack Rawling baseballs, one wiffle ball bat, and two aluminum baseball bats. And as I said, those are all from the Richard Stock for the Family Welcome Center. The total comes to $339. And Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion, we accept the gifts with gratitude, and the letter of appreciation has already been sent to Mr. Stock, so we appreciate that.
I'll second that.
Motion is being seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's approved. Finally, not finally, next we have bills payable for FY '21 in the amount of $812,508.59. And Mr. Souza, I believe you have some questions.
I had one question, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ms. Moynihan, I have a question on Vax Robotics, just curious on that one, that doesn't seem to be something that's been one of our normal.
On page 20, Vax Robotics is supplies that we purchase for the robotics class that we have, and it's part of the Innovation Pathways Grant, so that has been purchased by that grant and not in the school budget.
That's the middle school?
Yes.
Middle school at Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. I was hoping we were going on that trail, and we did. That's very good. Mr. Chairman, I'll approve, make a motion, we approve the bills payable warrant FY '21 in the amount of $812,000, excuse me, $812,508.59 as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made in second, and I just want to say that there are other members of the committee here, and if they have any questions on the bills, when the item comes up on the agenda, would be the time to ask questions. So motions have been made in second to accept the warrant as presented. And?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Souzy, yes. Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
And myself, yes. And facilities update.
This morning, we had the Mokeehe School Building Project meeting, and I am happy to say that the Mokeehe project's about 99% completed. And right now, the pre-K playground is being built and assembled, and that should be ready within the next month for us kids to play. So that is very exciting for the Mokeehe project. And then also, the use of facilities, we are opening up our use of facilities for outside organizations, but of course, we're waiting until our school year is over. And so, once school year is over, we will be opening up for our facilities for rental. But again, we are watching to see guidelines and any basics of any changes of capacity. So we are working with the Board of Health and watching DSC guidelines as we go forward, as we know things change very quickly. And that is it.
Any questions on the, either the use of facilities or the facilities update?
Will we accept the report?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Martin votes yes. Anything else for the good of the order?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, so voted. Thank you, Steve.
Call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. If you could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. On the roll call?
Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yeah. Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Mr. Palowski. Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagin's present. Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mrs. Almeida.
Present.
Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Chairman Souza.
Present.
And we also would like to have a moment of silence for two departed members. We have Donald C. Tremblay, who was a police investigator and for a long time in East Providence. Prior to that, he was a veteran of the United States Air Force stationed in Okinawa. He is the father of Dana Dennehy, who is a social studies teacher in Martin School at grade seven, so our sympathies go out to her family. We also have Patricia McMahon, wife of James H. McMahon. Can you hear?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Who passed away on Sunday, May 9th. She was a graduate of Bishop Cassidy High School, Bridgewater State College, and for 35 years, she taught for the Taunton Public Schools, beginning at Bennett School and ending her career at Martin Middle School. So please keep your thoughts and praise for the families of these two individuals. A moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Okay, approval of the minutes of May 5th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted? Oh, okay, thank you. And we do have a Student Council Representative Report this evening from Aslan Campbell, who is joining us via Zoom. Welcome, Aslan.
Good evening, Mayor O'Connell and members of the school committee. To begin, we had a very successful Grade 10 ELA MCAS this past Monday and Tuesday. We had 534 students sign up for the test and had a great effort by all students and staff. THS also had a great Teacher Appreciation Day last week. Teachers received notes of appreciation and their emails from students. On April 29th, College Planning Night was presented for the Class of 2022 students and guardians. AP exams have success, been successfully occurring the past weeks. 352 students will be completing AP exams. May 7th was College Decision Day for the Class of 2021. It was very successful, and thanks to the PTP, THS Tiger Shack, and THS Class of 2021 for donations. Yesterday, May 18th, Military Signing Day occurred to celebrate and recognize students joining the U.S. military. Spring sports are off to a great start. All teams are working very hard at all levels. As for the Student Council, we are working to plan some last-minute events to finish off the year strong. That will complete my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Aslan. And it's very nice that the students did a Teacher Appreciation Day. I'm sure they were thrilled.
Chair, I want to take a motion to accept the.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the Student Council Representative Report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you. Mr. Souza, there's public input at this point?
Wendy?
There's no public input.
Okay, no public input, so we will move on. And we next have the FY '22 budget presentation.
John, is that going to be up here?
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, everyone. As we have done in the past, and as we continue to go through and follow the Massachusetts budget cycle, tonight, we'll be providing you with an update on the House and Senate Ways and Means budgets. Since the last time we met and presented the budget, which was the governor's budget, the House and the Senate have passed their budgets. So as we go through the presentation, you'll see where we are in the budget cycle and what are the next steps as we continue to go along, and share with you the projections of revenue that were added to Chapter 70 through the House budget, and the revenue that was added through the Senate Ways and Means budget. So I'll continue with the presentation, knowing that much of the information that you've, in this presentation, you've seen already, so I may just glance or skim over the information real quick and really focus on new material that has been added to the budget, added to our budget presentation. So tonight, we will focus on the appropriation. As the school board members are aware, next week, we are scheduled for another budget workshop, where we will focus on ESER II and ARP, which is the American Rescue Plan, or also known as ESER III, as I learned today during my conference call with Commissioner O'Reilly. And while I'm preparing for the presentation, I should note that the process we are following with ESER II and ESER III is a process that Commissioner O'Reilly has asked that we follow. He's asking that school communities go slow, be very thoughtful, and be very thorough with utilizing or when utilizing ESER II and ESER III to address the needs that have been identified during the pandemic, and also to address the needs that'll help move our district and move our students and move our staff forward in the two to three years to come. So we always like to start our presentations with a reminder of our mission. It's always good to reflect on why we do this work. The Taunton Public Schools is committed to providing academic excellence to every student in every classroom in every school, instilling a lifelong passion for learning, perseverance, and the awareness needed to be productive members of our global community. This next slide should look familiar, so we'll talk about the enrollment and inflation. We'll talk about Chapter 70. The budget will be less than the original FY '21 Chapter 70. I will talk about the impact of the Student Opportunity Act, which is being phased year one. We will discuss federal and state stimulus funds. And we'll talk about new staffing and new resource needs, intervention, staffing, technology, and personal protective equipment, which are all items we'll continue to budget. The last time we met and talked about this, not much has changed regarding student enrollment throughout the state of Massachusetts. We're down about 31,000 students throughout the state, which is a drop of almost 3.26%. At the greatest impact is being seen at the pre-K and kindergarten level, where we have roughly almost 17,200 students, which is an 18% drop in the state pre-K enrollment and kindergarten enrollment. At the elementary level, we see a little over a 4% decrease, which is about 17,332 students. And at the middle and high school, the enrollment remains very stable, with a slight decrease of about 3,000 students, which is less than 1%. So how does this impact, or how do these numbers look in Taunton? So in Taunton, on our Chapter 70 enrollment, our foundation enrollment, we lost 160 students per the October 1 report. That 160 students equates to about $2.1 million in Chapter 70 funding. So we have a comparison from Fiscal '20 to Fiscal '21. It's a difference of 160 students, which is 2%. We mirror the state almost to a T, where we see the greatest impact at the pre-K and kindergarten level, where we have 195 students who are not attending this year. And again, a majority of those families chose not to send their child into school because of their age and knowing how difficult it would be for students at that age to attend remotely. We have, at the elementary grade level, this was something that we corrected from the last presentation, or we had the numbers flipped during the last presentation. So for Fiscal '20, we had 3,122 students enrolled in the elementary grades. For Fiscal '21, we have 3,019 students, which is a loss of 103 students. We did see an uptick in middle school and high school, so we have an additional 95 students, which is a growth of about 3%. As I mentioned earlier, the loss of 160 students is a loss of Chapter 70 funding or foundation budget of about $2.1 million. I know it doesn't always become clear, but it gets a little clearer every time we talk about Chapter 70. The city of Taunton receives, of that $2.1 million, the city of Taunton receives 65% of that $2.1 million in the form of Chapter 78. 65% of $2.1 million is $1.4 million. So the loss of that 160 students equates to a loss of $1.4 million in Chapter 78, and that also reduces the city's required contribution by 700,000. So when you combine both numbers, they will add up to $2.1 million. And when you multiply the 160 students by the 13,000 and change that we receive in the form of foundation aid, it equates to $2.1 million. So that's how the numbers all tie, for those of you doing the math at home. So again, this just kind of shows what I just explained. The inflation factor, the inflation increase, $1.4 million. The loss of students, the loss of 160 students is a negative impact of $2.1 million. So that's a difference of a loss of $685,000. The Student Opportunity Act being funded in the first year is an increase of 3.7. When you combine all those totals, Chapter 70 foundation budget changed by $3.1 million. Again, 64% or 65% of that 3.1 will come to the city in the form of aid, and the rest is contributed as part of the city's local contribution. And again, just more graphics to kind of show where we were pre-pandemic. So pre-pandemic, I don't think my laser cursor is working. So pre-pandemic, where it says FY '21 House Original in the orange to the far left. So before the pandemic, the governor's original budget called for our required net school spending to be $105 million. When all was said and done, I believe in October, when the budget was finally approved during the middle of COVID, the foundation budget was $103 million. So when the governor's original budget, January 2021, it's only about $1.2 million more than what was originally proposed under the original House One budget pre-pandemic. It's important to note, because this does not reflect the 160 students or the 30,000 students that are not accounted for under the state's Chapter 70 formula. And I also provided you with the state numbers, where you see, pre-pandemic, the state's Chapter 70 was $5.4 million or $5.5 million. During the pandemic, when the state budget was finally approved, it was down to about $5.283. Coming out of the pandemic, the governor has pretty much brought the funding levels to what it was pre-pandemic. Again, not accounting for 30,000 students. And I, my math isn't that good, so if I was going to calculate 30,000 students times the state's Chapter 70, that number would be substantially higher, because again, those 30,000 students were not factored in to Chapter 70. But we will talk about how the state plans to account for those students through a pool of money that'll be made available beginning July 1st. So we just tracked for you the budget through the budget cycle. So in May 6, 2020, the foundation budget was $105 million in the general fund. What we proposed as a spending budget was $97.9 million. So if we fast forward to the governor's budget last, this past January, so the foundation budget was set at a ceiling of $106 million. We proposed a spending budget, which has not changed, of just under $98 million. So what we are proposing is a budget that we pretty much were asking for last year at this time. So we've been very lean as far as our requests, and I also need to commend this group, because you made some very difficult decisions last year, when we had to reduce our budget by $4 million, and then restore $2 million once our Chapter 70 was secure. So again, we're still short $2 million where we were last year at this time. The House Ways and Means budget, when it was passed on April, the foundation budget did not change, our spending did not change. But under the Senate Ways and Means budget, which was, I believe, released on May 12th, we see a slight uptick to about $107 million, which is our projection. And again, our general fund budget, which has not changed, has increased by less than 1%, 0.04. So due to the enrollment decline, the FY '22 budget for Fiscal '22 General Fund is slightly more than the original budget amounts adopted last year. The FY '21 budget reduction of $2 million balanced on one-time pandemic-related funding. So we cut $4 million, we restored $2 million once our Chapter 70 was reinstated, and then we made up the difference strategically using our COVID funds, which was ESER I, and there was the CV, CVCR grant, CVR grant, thank you. So utilizing our grant funding, we were able to put our budget together, and again, have a very successful year this year. Fiscal '22 House and Senate Ways and Means budget provides an additional $394,000 in Chapter 70 funding than was adopted under the Fiscal '21 budget. So the Student Opportunity Act, I think we've explained this, and I think all of you could do an excellent presentation, or possibly even write your dissertation on the Student Opportunity Act, so I won't belabor the fact. I'll just mention two key points, is that when it comes to low income, there are now 12 deciles, Taunton is in the 10th decile, and that is no longer dependent on staff collecting free reduced lunch forms. That is all calculated through direct certification at the state level. And I also want to mention, when it comes to the phased-in in-district special education enrollment, what used to be 4% is now 5%, and 4% for non-vocational students. So we did see additional dollars added in that way, according to the Student Opportunity Act. And the Student Opportunity Act focused on addressing English language learners, special education out of district, rising costs, rising costs in health insurance, in retiree health insurance, and also low income to urban districts, which have the, which see the greatest number of low-income students. This was just a calculation or projection to show where we should have been or where we should be, in that because we were not held harmless through funding at the state level and under the foundation formula, we saw a net loss here of about $380,000. But again, I'll explain how the state plans to address this through one-time funding that'll be made available again beginning July 1st. So the House and Senate Ways and Means budget, which was updated on April 7, 2021, the House and Senate agreement created a new $40 million reserve fund to help school districts that were adversely affected by pandemic-related enrollment changes. In our case, we lost 160 students, and I believe one of the documents in your packet, our enrollment has actually decreased by almost 300 students from September to as of today. And there's a nice report that Mrs. Perry put together that really provides you with the detail and explanation and rationale, and also the steps that we are taking to bring students back to the Taunton Public Schools. The reserve fund was approved to help stabilize school districts experiencing higher levels of enrollment and to support districts' needs, including transportation, instruction, and materials in a flexible way as kids return to in-person classroom learning in the upcoming, this upcoming fall. The additional funding will account for students who were not counted or accounted for in the school funding formula this past October. So again, the $40 million will be made available July 1st. We still don't know the mechanism that the state will use for districts to account for new students enrolling in the school system, but we will be receiving additional dollars. And I believe, as Mr. Martin has echoed in previous meetings, what's disappointing is the fact that we may get this money once into the school year, which then makes it difficult to hire positions of the highest staff. So we'll do some projections on our end on what we anticipate for funding, and if we have a solid belief that we can expect a certain amount of funding, then we may make a recommendation to the school committee. This is what we project on the low end, in that we would recommend bringing in these positions or utilizing this funding for this purpose moving forward, knowing that we should expect this one-time money. This one-time money, it is also important to note, it will not be calculated into the Chapter 70 formula for Fiscal '22. This is one-time money that'll go away at the end of the year, because once the October 1 report is done, that will provide the projections for Fiscal '22. I'm going to quiz you guys there. So again, I just want to kind of repeat that, again, the $40 million will be made available July 1st. I do not need to go into the explanation as to what surrounding communities have seen as far as student loss. The federal stimulus funds, which Mrs. Moynihan has done a great job with our business office as far as tracking and accounting for, as well as Principal Byron, who's assisting us with the grants. So we have received and expended the Remote Technology Grant to the tune of $640,000. That was a competitive grant that we utilized to make our district a one-to-one district. All our students have access to a Chromebook, pre-K through 12. The CVRF school reopening funding, again, that was used to build our robust remote learning platform, the Poly cameras, which are the three-in-one conference cameras, the Permittium boards, the work that we also did to our HVAC systems, that was covered through the CVRF school reopening funding. That was also, we also utilized the State Coronavirus Prevention Fund to build our robust technology platform. We also utilized the ESER CARES One Act, or Act One, to purchase PPE, additional technology, cleaning and sanitizing equipment, and to help offset and balance our budget, especially in the area of technology infrastructure. We are still in the process of finalizing our application for ESER II or CARES Act II, and we will be receiving, I heard today through our conference call with the commissioner, we should be receiving our actual allowance of the American Rescue Plan on May 24th. We should have those actual numbers and the application. So again, I want to commend the committee. We are doing our due diligence. We are following a very thoughtful process to make sure that those two buckets of funding are utilized properly to address regression, learning loss, and to also put us in a very good position two to three years from now to make sure our students are caught up. We also learned that this funding can be used for previous or prior-year expenses. So if there is something that we are carrying over that is eligible to be applied to ESER II or the American Rescue Plan, we can apply to have that, those programs or those grants cover that funding. But as of now, I don't anticipate there being a need. But as of now, I don't anticipate there being a need. And then with regards to our budget planning, these were the areas that we focused on. Pre-K and K enrollment, ventilation systems, you know, the budget gap using one-time funds, the continuation of technology in personal protective equipment, retiree and health insurance. Uh, we continue to advocate whole harmless, but it appears that that'll be resolved come September, July first with the forty million dollars. A low-income student count, we continue to track our numbers very closely. We continue to look at our facilities to make sure that upgrades or needed upgrades are done in a timely manner for summer school, as well as for the return of students in the fall. And we also continue to keep a very close eye on us, on sustaining our one-to-one technology initiative. When you undertake an initiative of this size and scope, it is costly. So we do have some short-term solutions, as well as working on a long-term solution that involves the Taunton Alternative High School creating a Chromebook repair shop, which, um, which is slowly but surely getting off the ground. I won't spend a lot of time here, because I think we, uh, you know, suffered enough last year when we had to make all these cuts. But I think, I just think it's helpful to remind the committee of where we were last year at this time, and also to remind the public of where, of where we were last year at this time, where we reduced our budget by three point six million dollars. So in fiscal twenty-two, in using our ESER Two and our ESER Three funding, we will begin to start reintroducing some of these positions. They might not look the same, they may come in a different capacity, but we do have plans and ideas on how we can bring much of this back into the Taunton Public Schools in a very phased, thoughtful approach. So right now, where we are in the budget process is with the Conference Committee budget, which will begin in June. So the governor released his budget, the House released their budget on April fourteenth, and the Senate released their budget on May twelfth. So we are, we are now heading into Conference Committee. Again, in June, there will be vetoes, in June, there will be overrides, and then in June, July, we should anticipate the final budget. And I also provided you with a little history, so you can track how those numbers have increased throughout the budget cycle. I won't spend a lot of time, uh, because again, this has changed, it hasn't been updated. All we could do here is provide you with a, with a projection on what the foundation budget would be, which I believe would be around a hundred and seven million. And then whatever that difference is, then we could make the adjustments to the required district contribution. But I feel like we'd be doing you a disservice if we ran projections and then they didn't come in at the exact amount. So we decided we would just leave these figures the way they were under the governor's budget. And once they are finalized, probably sometime in July or August, we will share that information with the school board. And again, right now, under the foundation budget, we are receiving for every student enrolled in the Taunton Public Schools, per the foundation budget, we are receiving thirteen thousand four hundred and eight dollars per student. We saw increases in our vocational assessment, we saw increases in our high school assessment, we saw increases in our junior and middle school assessment, as well as our low-income assessment, English language learners, and also our special education, we did see increases compared to fiscal twenty-one. In the, the famous triangle for net school spending, so again, running a projection, required net school spending, we believe, will be about a hundred and seven million dollars. So between the services, the indirect costs that the city provides to school department, and the appropriation, there has to be, a hundred and seven million dollars has to be spent on education within the Taunton Public Schools. The state's share will be roughly sixty-eight point nine million dollars, which is sixty-five percent. The city's share will be thirty-five percent, again, in the form of the appropriation and also in the form of indirect costs will equal thirty-five percent. And I provide you with the comparison to fiscal twenty-one versus fiscal twenty-two as of May twelfth. So you notice under foundation enrollment, we see a decrease in the enrollment. Under the foundation budget, you see an increase from a hundred and three to a hundred and six million dollars. The city's required district contribution increases by just under two million dollars. Chapter Seventy increases by two point two million dollars. And I am thankful and grateful to the mayor and the city's budget director, who have committed that whatever the Chapter Seventy increase is for fiscal twenty-two, that will be added to the fiscal twenty-one appropriation. So knowing that we can count on the Chapter Seventy increase plus the current year's appropriation allows us to not have to make any cuts. So I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank Gill Ennis and her administration. Because last year at this time, I think we were both in very different situations on the school side and on the city side because there was just so much uncertainty regarding Chapter Seventy. And there was so much uncertainty at the, at the state level regarding, uh, projections for what municipalities could expect. So we were both in a very difficult situation, and it's nice to be where we are now, knowing that the funding is there. And I can present, Mrs. Moynihan and I can present to you a budget that does not have any reductions. So thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, just kind of provide you with that little history, that little snapshot to see how the numbers have increased throughout the budget cycle. So under the governor's budget, the Chapter Seventy Eight was sixty-six point six million dollars. The city's contribution was thirty-six point eight. You add both of those numbers up, it equates to just over a hundred and three million dollars. So under the governor's budget for fiscal twenty-two, which was released in January, an increase to sixty-eight point four million dollars in the form of Chapter Seventy Eight. The city's contribution increased from thirty-six to thirty-eight million, or thirty-eight point one million. And you add both those numbers up, it equates to a hundred and six. And again, we, we did some preliminary projections for the House Ways and Means budget and, and the Senate Ways and Means, that's a typo under the May twelfth column, that should say Senate Ways and Means. So under the House Ways and Means, we saw an increase in the Chapter Seventy of about four, three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, I believe it was three ninety-two. And then under the House Way, the Senate Ways and Means, Chapter Seventy increased slightly by about seven thousand dollars. So altogether, I believe it's three ninety-nine. We rounded, we rounded it off to four hundred thousand is the additional Chapter Seventy funding we have received since the governor's budget was released in January to where we are now in May. So required net school spending, required net school spending, we anticipate that the foundation budget will be set at a hundred and seven million dollars. Eligible indirect costs, once you back out transportation and crossing guards, will be about sixteen million dollars. So if we were to receive, or if the city were to be at a hundred percent net school spending, we would receive an appropriation of ninety-one million dollars. Because we are receiving this year's appropriation, which is ninety million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars, plus the Chapter Seventy increase, which is two million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-three, we can expect an appropriation in the amount of ninety-two million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, which would put the city, we believe, at about a hundred and two percent net school spending. Again, this is projections, this is, this will not be audited until the summer of two thousand twenty-three. Three, because twenty-two audit twenty-one, twenty-three. We'll have to check on that, but it will be, it will be audited. So again, these are just projections based on, uh, what we believe our appropriation will be from the city. Uh, and again, um, as you'll see on the next slide, I believe this was something that one of our school board members had requested, so we thought we would build it in. This demonstrator provides you with what are the average net school spending figures for all the urban districts in the state of Massachusetts. So there are twenty-four urban districts in the state of Massachusetts. Uh, right now, we're, we are in the top thirty-three percent target, at a hundred and five net school spending. But when you compare Taunton to the two hundred and eighty-one reporting districts, those are the districts who have completed their end-of-the-year report audit, because I believe there are three hundred and fifty-one. We are in the bottom fifteen, fifteen percent. So out of two hundred and eighty-one reporting districts, we're number thirty-nine. So again, to compare Taunton to a Wellesley or a Hopkinton is not an apples-to-apples comparison. But I believe to compare us to a Quincy, to the Four Rivers, the Brocktons, uh, more like districts in our areas, the New Vepids of the world, I think that's a more accurate depiction. However, as we are seeing, uh, there is a backward slide, where we are sliding back towards a hundred percent, which is, again, it is the minimum requirement of meeting a hundred percent. But we do, uh, understand, and we will continue to advocate and work with our city officials, that we want to be well above the hundred percent net school spending. And again, this just kind of shows you the history of net school spending and where we're projecting. Fiscal twenty is being audited now, so we should have some final auditing numbers or percentages on fiscal twenty. Fiscal twenty-one, which we are in now, will be audited next year, once we wrap up this fiscal year. And then fiscal twenty-two will be audited, uh, audited the year after that. So again, the trend, and a lot of it can be related to the pandemic, the trend does demonstrate that we are trending, uh, back toward a hundred percent. Uh, one of the questions that always is asked, what is the state average for net school spending? The state average for fiscal nineteen was a hundred and twenty-nine percent for the state. The fiscal, uh, the state average for fiscal twenty is a hundred and thirty-two percent. Our appropriation, how do all the numbers tie up? So we are proposing expenditures in the amount of ninety-seven million dollars, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. So every position that we currently have in place under the appropriation, so not grant-funded position, positions that are being funded through the appropriation, we have rolled over, we have accounted for cost increases, and we have gradually begun, and Mrs. Moynihan can talk in more detail if there were questions regarding the line item budget. We have gradually begun to reinstate items that were zeroed out last year by trying to phase it in twenty-five percent. Where our goal would be to fund it twenty-five percent a year over the next four years so that we get back to those funding levels we were pre-pandemic. We anticipate an appropriation, however, if we can do more, we will do more. But we think twenty-five percent is a realistic approach. FY twenty-two, we anticipate an appropriation of just under ninety-three million dollars for revenue. There is one change in revenue, um, working with Motta Grant, who oversees Circuit Breaker. We're in a good position this year where we anticipate, right now, having a Circuit Breaker carryover of six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So I need to commend Mrs. Moynihan, the business office, and our special education department. They have done a tremendous job tracking out-of-district special education costs. And we may see, we feel very confident that this number is going to hold as we've incurred all our out-of-district costs, and we're going to have a Circuit Breaker carryover of six eighty-four. We are projecting a Circuit Breaker reimbursement for fiscal twenty-two of three point two million dollars. If needed, we will tap into our revolving accounts to the tune of one million dollars. We have a grant carryover of about five hundred thousand. Cable Commission reimburses us for Mr. Jakes's services. And McKenney-Vento, we get reimbursed to the tune of about a hundred and fifty thousand for transporting kids out of district. That hundred and fifty thousand may be higher next year as we anticipate more students. This year was very lean. Next year, we anticipate more students being transported under, uh, McKenney-Vento because, because of the pandemic, a lot of students stayed in their, in the district where they were housed, if that makes sense. So that provides you with a, uh, zero variance, so we are projecting revenue of five point seven million dollars. What's not accounted in additional revenue and could be somewhat substantial is Circuit Breaker transportation carryover. So Circuit Breaker transportation carryover, which is under the Student Opportunity Act, if there are funds remaining once Circuit Breaker has been reimbursed to all districts, Jay Sullivan and his department will then begin reimbursing school systems for out-of-district transportation, twenty-five percent of the total cost. Based on our initial projections, it could be anywhere between three to five hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue, which would mean we'd have to use less revolving, which is a good thing for the Taunton Public Schools. Uh, Mrs. Moynihan will walk us through these next couple of slides. Did I stick one of your slides, Mrs. Moynihan?
That's quite okay, Superintendent, that's fine, that's okay, thank you. Um, as you see there, they are, our costs at a glance, where you will see that we compared, um, line items from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. These have not changed since the last time we presented them. As you can see, there's a slight increase in salaries, uh, by three point eight percent. Special ed tuitions, and that would be our out-of-district tuitions, an increase of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, which is a little bit over, um, two point seven percent. Transportation between FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two is, um, a four percent increase. Utilities, as I stated before, and I understand we're a little worried here, but we went ahead for utilities. I ended up looking at the past three years, and again, not really looking at last year as we did not have a full year to look at. And then I, um, I compared them and did an average to see how much money we could project for FY twenty-two. And then, of course, that average, I ended up adding, um, the COLA, and then that's how we came up for our utilities. Doing that, we did see that we could save a little bit more money there, and that was a decrease of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, which is a decrease of over six point eight percent. Contracted services is a difference of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Supplies, as you will see, again, in the lined item, we're slowly bringing them in. And mostly, um, they have been, um, just level funded, and that is a decrease of just under one percent. Maintenance of our buildings compared to FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two is a difference of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And totally, the difference of our entire categories, of all those categories between FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two is two point nine million dollars, which is an increase of three point one percent for the entire budget. The expenditure growth pl- patterns, as you can see here from FY two thousand fifteen all the way to the current fiscal year that we are projecting, you'll see that we have right now, currently, one of the slow, uh, slightest increases of, um, of our budget, a three point one percent, a high budget, of course, was in, uh, of an increase, was in FY fifteen, where we had a five point four one percent. FY twenty-one, of course, the one that we're in with pandemic, unfortunately, we just had a small increase. But now, whereas we start going, and after the pandemic, we have an increase of a three point one percent. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Moynihan. So again, I just want to reiterate what Mrs. Moynihan has reiterated, is that fiscal twenty-two, even though we are coming out of the pandemic, uh, it is still one of our lowest growth years in terms of bu- of budget growth. Where, um, early on, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, a lot of that can be attributed to the work that this committee did under Dr. Hackett to expand the Chapter Seventy-four vocational programs. And we started to see or reap the rewards of investing in those programs. And I will also say, when we start talking about, or go back to talking about the ESER and the American Rescue Plan, and how we can utilize that money to invest in the future, we may want to look into expanding some programs that would add enrollment to the Taunton Public Schools and then generate Chapter Seventy dollars, for example, pre-K. By growing our pre-K program, that could also serve very, serve the district very well, similar to how expanding the Chapter Seventy-four programs did. So if we invest wisely, we may see dividends down, down the road, to put on my Warren Buffett hat. So here we have per pupil expenditure reports, which, uh, we usually present these for the committee, but I also know the city council, uh, likes to see these reports. So I always kind of share this one, uh, twofold. So we're very proud of the fact that we, uh, are very frugal and we're very sound fiscally when it comes to utilizing our funding. But I also can't help but think that if we were in the middle of this pack, how much more we could be doing for the students throughout our school system. And I think we do a very good job with the resources that we have. So Taunton Public Schools continues to be in the bottom fifteen percent for per pupil funding of all districts in the Commonwealth. So that's three hundred and fifty-one reporting districts. Out of the, and we are the second lowest, who are out of the twenty-four urban districts, we are the second lowest when it comes to per pupil funding. When it comes to our administrative costs, uh, and again, you've heard me, uh, discuss this, and you've heard me discuss many times how COVID really exposed our the Taunton Public Schools. So the Taunton Public Schools continues to be in the bottom one percent. We're number two, uh, out of three hundred and fifty-one school systems, and we are the lowest when it comes to our urban brothers and sisters. The Taunton Public Schools continues to be in the bottom one percent for per pupil admin costs of all districts in the Commonwealth. So again, we work very hard, we put in the hours, and we believe as a school system that the resources should be in our classrooms. But it does come at a price, especially when we are faced with a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. But, and knowing the needs that are going to be there and to be at our fingertips or our doorsteps in the near future, we want to make sure that we only have the supports in the classroom. We also want to make sure that we have the supports in our buildings and throughout our district. I believe this was a slide or information that was requested by one of our board members, so it may be difficult to read off the screen. So we just provided you with some updates. So, uh, some additional information that was added to the slide is we did provide you with the actual FTE of employees in the city, in the, in the entire city of Taunton. So I believe in the entire city of Taunton, we have just around eighteen hundred employees. Uh, Taunton Public Schools with eleven hundred and fifty-one employees, we make up the majority of the total employees in the city of Taunton, with sixty-three percent of that, of the total employees coming out of the school department. So we are the largest employer on the city side. Uh, when it comes to expenditures, the city's appropriation of eighty-eight When it comes to expenditures, the city's appropriation of 88-2, notice I didn't say 92-1, our appropriation was 88-2. That 92-1 million dollars, which is the big piece of the pie, the big blue piece of the pie, also incorporates funding that goes to Bristol Plymouth and Bristol-Aggie of just under $4 million. So 4% of the 44% is to the vocational schools. So really, the Taunton Public Schools, we employ 63% of all city employees, and we make up less than half, 40% of the city's general expenditures. And this is my favorite part of the presentation. So Mrs. Monahan and I have a, I think we have like a little duet going here, correct, Mrs. Monahan? So why don't you go first, and then I'll go, oh, yeah, I go first, and you go second. So I will take the right hand, the left-hand side. So the state continues to pay the lion's share, 64% of our educational expenses. Taunton Public Schools experienced significant budget cut cuts and reallocation, reallocation of funding due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Federal and state COVID relief grant funding was used to balance and offset budget shortfalls, and we are grateful for that funding, because if not, I would be singing a much different tune today. Federal and state COVID relief grants, funding utilized to prepare our schools for remote, hybrid, and in-person learning. So without that funding, we would not have been able to educate our students remotely, in person, or hybrid, to the tune of which we did this past year. The Taunton Public Schools, again, continues to be in the bottom 15% for per pupil funding for all districts in the Commonwealth. Out of the 351 school systems, TPS has the second lowest per pupil administrative costs. Annual increases in spending have averaged approximately 4% for the past eight years. The Taunton Public Schools developed a comprehensive reopening plan involving 150 community members, and I cannot thank those community members enough. I cannot thank the school committee, I cannot thank our friends on the city side for their help and support in helping us to get through what has been a very challenging year throughout Taunton, the state, and the country. The Taunton Public Schools provided every student with a device to access curriculum and instruction. Some highlights, we had 400, despite the pandemic, we had 400 high school juniors take the PSAT. And throughout the pandemic, the Taunton Public Schools provided all staff members with quality, social justice, professional development. Each session that we held, each webinar that we held, we had over 800 members in attendance. Mrs. Monahan?
And I'll be taking over the right side of our highlights and final thoughts. The first one is that Taunton Public Schools provided students with, without Wi-Fi, access to hotspots so they could go ahead and continue doing remote learning, even if they did not have Wi-Fi in their homes. We also provided every student with a device to access curriculum and instruction. Taunton Public Schools provided families with meals throughout the pandemic at no cost, thanks to our food service director, Karen Pappa, Glenn Motta, and all of their staff that worked tirelessly doing, preparing these meals and also servicing them throughout the community. We also contracted with a third-party vendor to assess our HVAC systems and measure the airflow in our classrooms. That third-party vendor to assess our HVAC systems and to make sure that we had what was called the correct air exchange units. We also updated HVAC units in two of our schools, and that was in help of the city. And then we did do that in Martin and also at Bennett, so thank you, Mayor. Taunton Public Schools purchased HEPA air filters, ensuring that we had four air exchange units per hour, which is the minimal exchange rate that is needed for a good air quality. Taunton Public Schools purchased technology to support our hybrid model with many Chromebooks, thanking Carolyn Blino and her team of working tirelessly also in getting those Chromebooks into the hands of our students. And Taunton Public Schools increased our bandwidth from 1 gigabyte to 10 gigabytes, which is huge, and that, of course, is with the help of TMLP. So in all, the FY '22 budget reflects a gradual reinstatement of FY '21 reductions.
And this FY '22 budget has zero reductions listed. We are proud, very, very proud to say that we have proposed, I got to fix that typo, but we are very proud to propose a budget with zero reductions. And that concludes our presentation. Is there any questions regarding the line item budget? Any questions regarding the PowerPoint? We'd be happy to answer them at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral, and I just want to make a couple of comments. It's important that, you know, we're obviously all great partners, I think, on the city side, on the school side, and I am fortunate to sit here as well as in city council and on the city side. And I just think it's important for people to keep in mind that there are just, there are a lot of variables when you talk about comparing Taunton to other communities regarding net school spending, even communities that might be comparable, variables in median, median income, household income, you know, expenses that they have, just all sorts of things that I'm sure you can imagine. So I think that's important to keep in mind. And as Brenda just mentioned, we were pleased to invest about $2 million into the schools this year, in addition to ensure the health and safety of our kids and our teachers, of course, returning to school. We wanted to make sure that we supported you in that way. And we've just built a new school, which we're going to be pleased to do the groundbreaking on pretty soon. And so, you know, the city, in addition, has a lot of debt from previous schools that we've built as well, that, that. So there's other ways that the city does provide or pay for school expenses other than just through the net school spending. So I guess that's what I'm trying to point out, is for folks that may not understand that, all of the other things that the city does. And we also are spending now up to $2.8 million in chargebacks to the state for kids that go to charter schools. So that's an additional expense that we have on top of the net school spending and the money that we allocate to the schools. So we're still obviously recovering from the pandemic as well. And I think when we came in, the net school spending was at 105 or 106. You know, we certainly want to work towards moving it back up. I think it's going to take time for us to recover. Our revenues are still down, they're going to be down this year, maybe for years to come, I don't know. But we'll certainly take it one step at a time and always keep in mind the importance of the best education possible for all of our kids. And I think it's very fortunate that money is being made available to all of our school districts with us getting, it looks like possibly another 24 million or school district getting. So that's going to be a tremendous help over the next couple of years as well. So just wanted to kind of point out some additional numbers for the folks at home. Thank you. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, Assistant Superintendent Monahan, for the presentation. I just, what's stuck in my mind throughout the whole presentation, I hate when this happens early on, is when you mentioned about the loss of students statewide, the 30,000 number, and what we lost, about 160. So then you came back and said, you know, the state's going to make up by providing another $40 million in a reserve fund. So I took out my trusty calculator, and I had to do this twice. If I take that 40 million divided by 30,000, it's just over $1,333 per student. So if our students are in the area of about $13,000 or $14,000, we need $2 million of that money. So how does this happen? Do you know the answer? I don't even know if you know the answer.
Jake, tell me if I'm too close. So the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the Urban Superintendents Network, which I'm part of, we have discussed this at length. And we believe the $40 million is maybe about a third of what would be needed to address the 30,000 students throughout the state. Roger Hatch, who used to oversee finances, Fadesi ran an analysis, and that's what he said. He said, they think it's about a third of what's needed to address the 30,000 students. So again, if 10,000 students come back, it sounds like there's plenty of money. But if 20,000 come back, again, it's going to make it difficult for us. Should we need additional teachers? Should our class sizes increase? So again, we're fortunate, we are extremely fortunate to have the additional funding that we have coming. You better believe that I will be first in line, we will be first in line to get our enrollment figures in so we can get the money that we need. And I want to echo with what Mayor said. I don't expect the city to get to the levels of 106% for a nightmare. But I also do know that in time, in a good faith effort, that we can get, stay over 100%, which is what I would continue to advocate as a superintendent. So Mr. DeMello, it is concerning to urban superintendents because most of those 30,000 students are from the 24 urban centers.
Great, thank you. Mayor, if I may, one more comment. And I know that Assistant Superintendent Monahan went over the costs at a glance, and the first item was salary, and there was an increase of 3.8%. I just want the people at home to understand that we're not giving out 3.8% salary increases. This is all due to contractual agreements that have been in the books for years past. Am I correct in saying that? Great.
You're correct.
Great. And my last comment is just basically what the mayor said. I mean, we're all in this as a partnership, and we need both the city council, the mayor, and the school side, and TMLP, and everybody else, every 57,000 of us, to make this thing work. So I'm very happy where we're at, and I think it's going to be a great FY '22. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mr. Martin?
Your presentation, you know, was excellent, as far as I'm concerned. And I think you've covered everything leading into the FY '22 appropriation. The only thing that can change at this point is whether we get more Chapter 70 or possibly less, but that would be the only factor that I could see changing. So I guess my question is, are you looking for any kind of motion tonight?
We're going to schedule our budget hearing for the first meeting in June, which is where we would officially approve our budget. So I think the only motion that's needed at this point is just to accept the report, because we should have our final figures, or at least have a final figure. Mrs. Dougherty was kind enough to remind me that the Senate weighs and means, that was their proposed budget, not their final budget. So you're right, Mr. Martin, it could go up, it could go down. But usually, when it gets to the Senate, in my tenure as Assistant Superintendent, it's only gone up. So I feel very comfortable with the numbers. We feel very comfortable with the numbers we have here. So I would ask for a motion to accept the report. We will advertise for the June 2 meeting, that'll be our budget hearing, where we can approve our budget, and then we would go before the city council once a date is determined and present them with a modified version of this. I don't think they want to hear me speak, too.
So I'll make the motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mrs. Sager, you don't have to do a roll call. No, no, I said you don't have to do a roll call.
That's right, we're here.
Okay, so. So no further discussion, okay. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We still have, I still have questions.
I apologize.
That's okay.
So you told me that, and I forgot.
Yeah, no worries, Madam Mayor, no worries.
You need me to refer to a certain slide? Please let me know.
No, no slides necessary, it's all in our heads, remember that. On the rescue funding, the rescue fund, I guess they call it. So I guess Mr. DeMello pointed right to my, a couple of my questions. On the rescue fund, so we have no idea right now what the formula mechanism is for that. Or could we say 160 times a third of whatever the, whatever our original per pupil expense was?
No, I think what Mr. DeMello was, Mr. DeMello was alluding to was the 40 million, I don't want to call it potful money, but the 40 million.
The rescue fund part, uh.
The 40 million is not part of the American Rescue Plan.
No.
The 40 million is part of the governor's budget.
Right.
To address, sorry, sorry, the 40 million dollars is part of the House weighs and means, and Senate weighs and means, proposed budgets. Thank you, Mrs. Dougherty, I want to give credit where credit is due. It was part of their, it was part of their work, it was part of their work to address the 30,000 students who are not identified under the governor's budget.
Right, that's going to hold all the districts harmless for any loss of funds. But in that, in that sense, what you're saying is it's only going to really fund a third of the actual, so we're not going to be, we're not going to be totally.
And again, this, we don't know what the actual numbers will be. And the House, or the Senate, I believe, is still deliberating their budget. So there may be some work going on behind the scenes that Mrs. Dougherty can better articulate than I can to possibly put additional funding in there.
So we'll have an update in the June, hopefully have an update in June. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mrs. Dougherty?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two questions. Just in response to this back and forth about the $40 million, there was apparently a sit-down between the Senate President and the House Speaker about the $40 million, and that $40 million plus actually appeared in both the Senate proposed budget and the House proposed budget. The House adopted that with the promise from the Chair of House Ways and Means that there would be a supplemental budget, it needs be. There were two efforts to amend the House budget to include, for example, $127 million to address the issues of the lost students, and that did not pass. And then there was another proposal that was made that did not pass to base the figures on 2019, I think, as you well know, so. And that did not pass. So I would imagine that that $40 million plus the supplement won't change in the Senate budget, simply because it was by agreement of the two leadership figures. And the Senate is still deliberating, they have not yet passed their budget out of the Senate. And Mr. Cabral was correct, it'll go to conference committee, as you probably well know, and then come back to all of us to see what we think, and then it'll go to the governor to see what he thinks. So the promise is that it really is on schedule, and there is not an expectation that it's going to carry over until the next of our fiscal year. So thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for you. I heard you say, Madam Mayor, that we, that the city was helping to support the cost of our charter school payment. I wasn't quite clear about what you said about charter schools, if you could just.
We get chargebacks from the state every year, so we have to pay money. And we get chargebacks from the state every year for many, many different things. One of them is for charter schools, and the last one that we had was $2.8 million. Think of it in this, in this terms, Mrs. Dougherty.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, so Mayor O'Connell's stating is correct. For every student who attends a charter school that does not attend the Taunton Public Schools, those Chapter 70 dollars follow that student to the charter school. So that's the assessment that Mayor O'Connell is referencing. And then the last thing I would just add is, if that 40 million is the same in the House and the Senate budget, and they both pass, then it shouldn't be touched in conference committees, so. That's kind of the rule. If it's in both the same exact way, you don't, you can't touch it in the conference committee. So if it's the same, you could be safe.
Yes, I think that the pressure on that will continue to build on the conference committee, so it could change at that level. But it has not yet, simply because they did agree ahead of time. But you never know.
Okay, thank you. Yes, is everyone, everyone all set? Okay.
The Chair will ask for a two-minute recess, please. Chair needs a two-minute recess, please. Could I have a motion, please? Motion made a second, all those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it, we're in recess, please, for two minutes. The Chair will call the Taunton School Committee back to order. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Chairman Souza, I appreciated that two-minute break. It allowed me an opportunity to recharge refresh my vocals. So I just want to highlight some information that you'll probably see reported in some local newspapers and on our social media outlets. Last week, we, last school committee meeting, we discussed PSATs, and we talked about how well our high school was doing with getting students into college, especially first-generation students, first-generation college students. So I'm very proud to continue to tout and gloat about our CVTE, or our Career Technical Education Program at Taunton High School, as well as the clubs. So the Taunton High School Career Technical Education Program offers high-quality vocational education and numerous club opportunities for our high school-age students. A four-year sequential course of study in various technical areas of college-bound and career-bound students, Taunton High School has an outstanding CTE program, which includes courses in marketing, computer-aided design, or CAD, culinary arts, early education and care, radio and TV broadcasting, which Mr. Jakes oversees, and many, many more programs. Students in Taunton High School CTE programs receive articulated credits or college credits while also earning their high school diploma. Many students in our programs have gone on to further their educational pursuits at BCC. They have also gone on to Bay State College, Johnson and Wales University, Catherine Gibbs School, Massa Sawyer Community College, and the New England Institute of Technology, and many more other institutions. In addition to the CTE curriculum, students in marketing and culinary arts program also receive hands-on experience in our school store, at the Tiger Shack, and the school restaurant, the Tiger Den. Though, through the many CTE programs. Though through the many CTE programs offered at Taunton High School, students have also had the opportunity to join clubs and organizations such as Skills USA and DECA to build upon their curriculum and give them additional hands-on experience outside of their classes and shop. Last month, nine Taunton High students competed at Skills USA 47th Annual State Leadership and Skills Conference after qualifying at the district level. I want to recognize the following students. For the audio/radio production, Senior Trevor Emma and Junior Emily Gannon won first place and will move on to Nationals for their podcast-style public service announcement. In the job interview category, we want to recognize Senior Isabella Neely. She won second place for her interview for a restaurant management. In computer programming category, Junior Jared Wendell won third place for his computer program. For each competition category, students were judged by industry professionals. Later this year, Trevor Emma and Emily Gannon will compete in the National Leadership and Skills Conference, which will be held hybrid and... Will be held using a hybrid and remote format. Taunton High School's DECA chapter has grown to be the third-largest chapter in Massachusetts, with 283 members last year. So I've challenged Mr. McPhail to get to 300. We want him to get to 300, and he will get there next year. We saw a slight decrease due to COVID. We have 190 active members. But it doesn't mean that DECA's impact... Taunton High's DECA chapter does not have an impact or is not making an impact throughout the state. This year, 15 Taunton High students qualified to compete at the DECA International Career Development Conference, ICDC, last month. Of those students, four advanced to the second round of the conference and earned themselves a spot in the top 20. In Taunton High School DECA 2020, 2021, 2022, President Nicole Fisk, she placed third and received a Glass Award. This is the highest award that Taunton has ever won. Other notable Taunton High School competitors at this year's ICDC include Senior Camden Mullin, Junior Peter Yee, Senior Olivia Weber, Junior Nicole Fisk. She received a second round and a third-place finish. Junior Nicole Drake, she was a second-round placement. Senior Chloe Canberra, Junior Allison Amaral, sophomore Quincy Jones Sylvia, freshman Zachary Gay, freshman Gabrielle Luskowski, freshman Connor Pascal, Senior Ty Calley, he also finished second, sophomore Joey Kazluskas, he finished second, and Senior Spencer Andrews and Junior Colby Dakota. The chapter has also earned a Diamond Level Award for three consecutive years, which is awarded to the DECA chapter that meets the rigorous requirements of a chapter of excellence. The achievement could... Would not be made possible without the astounding effort of the DECA State Officers, Megan Dakota, who's the daughter of Mulcahy Elementary School Principal Kathleen Dakota, and President Camden Mullin. Additionally, Taunton High School DECA also has a cable-access TV show on TCAM, and the person or the gentleman who is running that program is no stranger to the school committee. It's our very own Hector Aponte, who has also just elected a Massachusetts DECA State Officer. So overall, I cannot be prouder of our DECA chapter and the students who make up the DECA program, and also the leadership, the adults who oversee the program. So we have great programs at Taunton High School, not only in the classroom, but also extracurricular. I'd like to provide you with a quick update on where we are with the curriculum revision cycle. So as you are aware, the district is in the process of piloting math curriculum resources as part of the curriculum revision cycle. We are currently piloting, or we began piloting, math resources on Friday, March 12, 2021. Forty-seven educators have committed to piloting resources or being involved in the process. The implementation began with piloting units on a rolling basis based on school site and resources, starting on April 26, May 3, and May 10. Before the delivery of units, each resource vendor provided an opportunity to participate in an orientation webinar, or webinars, for their respective resources, and provide an opportunity for breakout groups for discussions and question-and-answer sessions with the teachers who are piloting the programs. In addition to the vendors, our educators will be supported by Dr. Tina Rogers, who is the math coordinator for Pre-K through 7, Looney Math Consulting, who we are utilizing through our SR funding to provide consulting support at various schools throughout the school system, and also supporting us with our SSOS work with the state, and also Heidi Sabini, who has also been supporting staff who are piloting programs. So we want to make the school committee aware, and also the subcommittee aware for curriculum revision. On Thursday, May 27, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., all educators and Dr. Rogers, Looney Consulting, and Assistant Superintendent Barata will be meeting to discuss each pilot's strengths and areas of need using a rubric based on their work with Ed Reports. Members of the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee, Mrs. Almeida, Mrs. Fagan, and Mr. Souza, you will be receiving an invitation shortly, and any additional school committee member who wishes to attend, please contact me or Mrs. Devine, and we will make sure that you have access to attend this meeting. It is also important to note that we received some great news this week... Last week. On Thursday, May 13, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education hosted a webinar titled Accelerated Math. The purpose of this informational session was to inform districts of the availability of high-quality core instructional materials in which DESI intends to make available to districts through a competitive process at no cost for the upcoming school year. As I've said in previous meetings, DESI has a program called CURATE, which is curriculum rated by teachers, and we also utilize Ed Reports. So the programs that we are piloting have already been vetted by Ed Reports and have already been vetted by CURATE. So we know that a lot of the legwork has been done. In the past, we would bring in 20, 30, who knows how many vendors would come in, and we would pilot all those multiple curriculums. Now we have a process through the state and through Ed Reports where we can really narrow our focus and pilot high-quality, research-based curriculum. What's exciting for us is that the material that we are piloting falls into this pool, which DESI may help to fund and support. So this is a great opportunity for the Taunton Public Schools to purchase or adopt a high-quality math curriculum. And again, we'll research and find out what DESI is willing to cover, or how much of a cost DESI is willing to cover, if we adopt... Where to adopt one of these two curriculums. So we are very excited about that. I hope many school committee members can attend that curriculum revision meeting, ask questions, get your questions answered, learn more about what we... What our teachers have been piloting, the pros and cons, and how it aligns with our strategic plan, and how it aligns to our goals moving forward. With the science revision update, we are currently... Currently, all science educators in grade 6 through 12 have received training on the Open Sci Ed program, which again is a very high-quality, evidence-based, research-based curriculum. We have three individuals who will be participating in the training that will be offered at a national level this summer. Our very own Liz Palowski, who is the science coordinator, will be attending with 7th-grade science teacher Anne Guglielmo, and Tanya Bransky from Taunton High School. They will undergo this training and become nationally-recognized facilitators in the Open Sci Ed program. Again, this is another program that DESI has vetted through CURATE and that has been vetted through Ed Reports. On the social studies front, I need to commend Mr. Barata and Becky Coet for their work on the... In the area of humanities. On May 7, 2021, the district submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education an application of interest to participate in the department's field testing of Grade 5 and Grade 6 History and Social Science curriculum units. So the district will be notified if we are accepted into the pilot by May 21. If we are accepted, the district will have a team of Grade 5 educators from the Friedman Middle School and a team of 6th-grade educators from the Martin Middle School who will be piloting these materials. This is a two-year commitment for Fiscal '22 and Fiscal '23, and upon successful field testing, the units will be made available to all schools across the Commonwealth. Identification of branches of study, along with a timeline of delivery and professional development, has also been included for you to peruse at your leisure in the packet. So as you can see, the Taunton Public Schools, rather than being reactive, we are being proactive in getting in line with DESI. And I... It is refreshing to see DESI acting more like a partner versus more as a punitive partner in providing us with these resources and these opportunities to really put high-quality curriculum that would only... Will often be seen in some more affluent communities in the hands of our students here in the Taunton Public Schools. So if we can give our kids a Cadillac, we're going to give our kids a Cadillac, and that's what the goal of the Taunton Public Schools is. And last but not least, I just want to commend our Food Service Department. They received a $4,000 grant through the Summer Eats Grant, which is in the amount of $4,000 of the Taunton Public Schools. Was recognized for ensuring that nutritious meals are being served to students throughout our community during the summer months and also throughout the pandemic. To date, the Food Service Department has delivered over 570,000 meals. We've actually served more remote meals than we have in-person meals, when you look at the data. So the 2021 Summer Eats Grant will be used to offset equipment, advertisement, and staffing costs, and anyone 18 years or younger may receive a breakfast or lunch. And more importantly, anyone accessing meals does not need to be a city resident, or identification is not required. Students or caregivers may pick up meals on behalf of their children. Meals will be served at multiple locations. I have listed the locations, and I've also provided you with sample menus of what our students or what our community can expect. And then last but not least, under my Superintendent's talking points, we are still on schedule, and we will make modifications to our graduation based on the newest guidance that was released by DESI today. It will be an in-person graduation, a one-and-done in-person graduation, so we're very excited about that. Our elementary and middle school principals, as well as the high school, continues to prepare for end-of-the-year events. So the seniors are preparing for an in-person social, which will be held outdoors. I can share that information with the committee after this meeting. Mrs. Moynihan continues to work with community stakeholders to open up our facilities for use of facility. Mr. Otto Viennelli continues to allow outside agencies to use our grounds, as long as it doesn't conflict with our own activities. And I also want to recognize three TPS staff members who participated in the mayor's fitness challenge competition. Thomas Giottis, Marcus Gay, and Jessica Johansson, all at Taunton High School, serving in discapacities. They didn't win the event, but I think in the end they were winners because they looked great after participating in the fitness challenge. With that, that concludes my report.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Souza. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Your report was so jam-packed, full of information, that it's kind of hard to kind of take in. I'll have to go home and read it more carefully. But I have three separate questions. I first want to give a shout-out to Dala Hartung. I happened to be on a... At a meeting, a virtual meeting on vocational education a couple of days ago, and Dala was a presenter. I was so proud of her. It was very exciting to see her there, and she did a wonderful job, so I did want to say that. The second thing is that I have a question about the math revision, if I might, Mr. Souza. Is there... Is there more than one curriculum that people are looking at? I was trying to follow this chart that has been added to our information, but I can't quite figure it out, so I'm going to let you do that for us.
Yes, there is actually Illustive Math, which is being provided by two different platforms. Kendall Hunt is one, and the other is Enginuity. We have the San Francisco United School District Curriculum, which is being piloted along with Open Up. So there's three.
Three, three different.
But four, when you look at Illustive Math, being a different platform. And it's identical material, it's just how it's presented digitally, that our educators are assessing if they're piloting those two, the usability and such of both.
So the 47 teachers that are participating are obviously, excuse me, across the district, different grade levels, and you've divided up those three or four different curriculums across those 47 people? Or are they all piloting the same?
It's across grade levels, across buildings, and in some regards, it had to deal with teacher preference. For example, San Francisco math was being used at Mulcahy, so we had some teachers saying, "I'm familiar with it, let me continue on with that." Others, after the presentation, chose to go certain paths. So that was the... Providing choice for our educators to pilot the materials from grade level, from kindergarten up through grade 8.
And so the May 27 meeting is for everyone, and they'll, I'm imagining, choose the place that is compatible with the curriculum that they're piloting?
Correct. We'll get feedback from all the educators. I don't want to project my thoughts or anything like that. The rubric that was included in the packet actually is an adapted version of what Ed Reports does. Now, again, Ed Report comes out of the gate and wants to see, first of all, is it of high-quality material to begin with, and then other types of indicators. The great work of Tina Rogers and exactly all the coordinators of Pre-K 7 and High School, Donna Shavz, Elizabeth Palowski, Tina Rogers, Dr. Rogers, and Jordan Valloy, because we're sort of mirroring science and math, collectively looked at, okay, how can we develop a rubric before we pilot? Share that information with our educators in saying, this is what we're going to be looking at, and really from a student's perspective, and a teacher's perspective, and also family perspective, what's needed, what administrators need. So they were brought up to speed, this is the rubric we're using, questions and answers. So as they've been piloting these materials, they've been using this guide itself, so that when we come together on the 27th meeting, we'll be more efficient and allow for a lot of voices to be heard.
And my last question along those lines is that... So will we learn where in the Commonwealth these curricula are being used already, adopted already, as part of the package that will come back?
And I can brief you now, if you'd like, because I anticipated that question from prior, and I apologize, because I should have circled back earlier. Again, now, Illustive Math is K5, 6 through 8, goes into high school. 6 through 8 has already been out. It's of a high quality. They are making some tweaks to it, and the advantage of having Illustive Math perhaps as an option is it's continually being updated, and if you have that license, you get those updates as soon as they occur, based upon teacher feedback and consultants and such. So it's a sort of like a live curriculum. The K5 is under revision now, or should I say, hasn't gone the Ed Reports route yet, because it's queued up. And if you remember our scenario when we had wonders and looking at how they queue up in the system and be reviewed, and once you're in that cycle, you stay that way until you go through the process of being evaluated. So with the 6 through 8, Illustive Math already going through the process of high quality, K5 is in the process now, and in all likelihood, it's going to meet and exceed those standards as well, because, you hate to say it, but they understand what they're being evaluated on. So the districts you mentioned, going back to the Illustive Maths, Ipswich Public Schools, Springfield Public Schools, the middle level, Prospect Hill Charter School, Southwick-Tolan Granville, Codman Academy, Franklin Public Schools this year, K5 Marblehead Public Schools. Districts in final review, Fall River, Quincy, Weston, Uxbridge, and Danvers. Those piloting in one shape or another, Brockton, ourselves, Reading, and East Hampton. And given last week, I think it was, our webinar with DESI about the summer supports and moving the next year of piloting, seeing, for example, Illustive Math on that document, I think will pique a lot of districts' interest in, as they enter their own curriculum revision cycles, as this might be something they want to look at as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I have one more question, different question, and because Mr. Cabral raised the issue of graduation, I feel like I can raise an issue around graduation. I know that the scholarship awards is on June 3, and the message to us is that only students are allowed to participate, but because the governor has lifted the rule for gathering and masking and all of that kind of thing, is the school committee... And I don't know if it was your decision, Mr. Cabral, a general decision or the headmaster's decision, but I'm wondering if that could be revisited? So those of us who felt like we could attend that scholarship event could participate in the way that we do, far away from the students and basically far away from one another as well, so...
I will revisit that with Principal Mattos.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Souza.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dougherty. The wishes of the committee with the Superintendent's Report.
George Shap, report.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to Administrative Business Staffing Report.
Receiving papers on file.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear a second? On the motion, on discussion, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I note that the summer position for my wife is included in the report, so I'll ask to vote present.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Fiore. On the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and one present. Wendy? Wendy? Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Finance and Law Subcommittee, Chairman Martin.
Finance and Law Subcommittee met early this evening. There were five items on the agenda. The first one was student activities, of which there weren't any. Second item was a request to bid cafeteria supplies, and that request was accepted with all three members voting yes. And those bids will be opened sometime in the month of June. Donations, we had donations of, let's see, I do want to read these and give the person credit. Two soccer balls, six basketballs, two footballs, two Grand Slam T-ball sets, two T-ball gloves, two pack, three packs of tennis balls, eight packs of rolling baseballs, one wiffle ball bat, I should say, set, and two aluminum baseball bats. And those donations are earmarked for the Family Welcome Center, and all of them were presented by Mr. Richard Stock. So the motion was made to accept the report, obviously, to accept the donations and send a letter of appreciation if it already hasn't been sent. And that motion passed unanimously. And the bill's payable, was the, and the bill's payable this month, this two weeks, was in the amount of $812,508.59. Motion was made by, I believe, Mr. Sousa. Mr. Fiore seconded it, and that was approved by the full committee. And finally, Mrs. Moynihan gave a quick update. There was a building committee meeting this morning. This building is roughly 99%. I'm sure they're doing punch lists at this point in time. The playground at Mulcahy is being built as we speak, and it'll be ready probably in a few weeks. And finally, use of facilities will begin once students are not present in the building, in other words, once school gets out. So that involves the buildings themselves and the grounds, and they'll follow the same procedure they followed in the past, as long as it's subject to any kind of protocols that the city requires. And that, that's the report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Wishes of the committee with the Finance and Law Subcommittee report.
Will the report be accepted, the recommendations adopted?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, Subcommittee reports, is Unit A Subcommittee, the Teachers Bargaining Subcommittee, and I am the chairperson of that Subcommittee. I have a report, and my report is, we have a tentative agreement on a one-year successor agreement for a teacher's contract. And we will present that once they vote on it on their end, and then we'll present it to the school committee for, for, on our end and further, further conversation. But we're waiting for the TEA on this one. And that is my report.
Motion to accept the report.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. New business, status of school choice 2021, 2022. Recommendation to vote in favor of school choice.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, there's a special education legal services, and is it a letter in the packet, Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Chairman Sousa. So in the packet, and as I've discussed with members of the school committee, we are in need of legal service for the area of special education. So as you are aware, when we are soliciting services or supplies, municipalities are required to follow the Massachusetts State Bidding Requirements, as identified in the Chapter 30B manual, for procuring supplies, services, and real property. However, Chapter 30B does identify exceptions to the law or services that are exempt from the bidding requirements. Under Massachusetts General Law 30B, Section 1B15, Chapter 30B shall not apply to contracts with labor relation representatives, lawyers, or certified public accountants. Section 1 is attached. Therefore, the Taunton Public Schools is not required to contract with the lowest or most responsive bidder. Rather, the Taunton Public Schools has the right to contract with the vendor or service provider best suited to meet the needs of the district. I wanted to make the committee aware that effective May 3, the Taunton Public Schools will require legal counsel for matters related to special education. I have worked closely with Judy Moroney, the Director of Special Education, and Mrs. Moynihan, to solicit proposals from three leading legal firms who specialize in special education law. At this time, based on our due diligence and based on the references, we are recommending Lyons and Rogers LLC to provide services to the Taunton Public Schools that cover any aspect of specialization law. Based on our analysis, Lyons and Rogers LLC received the highest score. They have a strong track record for providing outstanding service and received excellent references. Lastly, we believe Lyons and Rogers LLC philosophy best aligns with the Taunton Public Schools. So my recommendation would be that we utilize their services with anything regarding or any area regarding special education law. I'd be happy to share the rubric with any member of the school committee, and I would be happy to share the references if any member of the school committee wishes to review them. And I did share the proposals with school board members who asked to see the proposals. So I would just wanted to bring this to your attention, as this is who I feel would be, would best provide services to the Taunton Public Schools.
Wishes of the committee?
Motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On discussion, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Chairman. So through you, Chairman, Mr. Cabral, is there a contract in place for a term of any kind?
No contract for term. This is our services performed. There's no retainer, so there's no contract. We can end our services with Lyons and Rogers at any time. We only pay for services rendered.
Okay, and you answered, no retainer. Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. On the, Ms. Doherty.
So just a question, so we would set aside a certain amount of resources not to exceed within the proposed budget upcoming to support this contract?
Yeah, our estimate was $50,000 is what we put, built into the line item budget. So if you look at the line item budget, you'll see that it went up from about 50 to 100,000.
So I had, excuse me, if I might, Mr. Sousa, asked if you could tease out of Mrs. Mitchell's overall work that she has been performing, which included special education legal services, just what that portion of her work was devoted to special education legal services? If you could do that? So will you bring the final contract back to us, or?
We don't have a contract. Well, I can share the proposal with you, that they shared with me. And I, I do believe I received the services that they will be providing, that Mrs. Mitchell, Attorney Mitchell, would have provided, so I can have Mrs. Devine, if Mrs. Devine could remind me tomorrow to make sure we send that to Mrs. Doherty, and we'll share that with the rest of the committee.
Mrs. Sousa, thank you. At the, at the budget meeting, I think it would be appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mrs. Almeida, via remote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the past, before we had Mrs. Attorney Mitchell as, for special ed issues, we had a very large expenditure for special ed, I, over the years, prior to her. What is the hourly rate, Mr. Cabral?
It depends. The average hourly rate, depending on who's providing the service, the average would be approximately $180 an hour, which is, I believe, comparable, if not in line, with what we are currently paying for our labor management contractual rates.
Okay, that's fine. That, I, you know, would like to see them basically the same in the ass, so I don't see a problem with that. Okay, thank you.
It will depend on who's providing the service. So if it's, if it's research, it will most likely be a high-level associate, so that rate is much less. If it involves a court case, where we need one of the attorneys or one of the partners to attend, then that would be a higher rate. But the average rate, when I, when we calculated it, was about 180 an hour. So it will depend on the service and who's providing the service, which is advantageous to the school department, because most law firms, the rate is the rate. Doesn't matter who's doing it.
So they're going to fluctuate depending on the ability of the attorney that's handling, whether it's a paralegal or whether it's an attorney?
Correct. And we will receive itemized reports, and this firm told me that they bill to the minute. So they don't round up to the quarter, or to the half hour, to the hour. They bill by the minute, so it's a very, very accurate billing report. And when I did my due diligence with New Beffid, who utilizes them, and also Dartmouth, which is a smaller system, so a larger system and a smaller system, the superintendents could not speak highly of their services, again, related to special education. I mean, I am very confident in Attorney Gay and Gay when it comes to the labor side or other legal matters. So having someone who specializes in labor, like Attorney Gay does, and having someone who specializes in special ed, I believe puts the school system in very sound or very firm footing. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. I'll set, Mrs. Almeida.
Well, yes, because now we will have two attorneys, and this attorney is just for special ed, and the school committee hires the attorney. So are we going to have the ability to interview them? Or we're going to waive that to the superintendent?
So I, again, I offered each member of this committee the opportunity to review the proposals. Some of you took me up on that offer, and I shared the proposals with you. We've done our due diligence in referencing, and we had a grading system for the three proposals. So my recommendation is that we utilize Lyons and Rogers. If the school committee wishes to vet the three pro, the three attorneys, that is your purview. However, the administration has done that, and I feel in the end, you're going to come back to where we are with this recommendation.
Okay, and you're comfortable with them?
I would not be here if I wasn't comfortable recommending this firm.
Okay, thank you.
We took a very slow process. Ideally, we probably would have had this done before Attorney Mitchell left, but I wanted to be thorough. I wanted to do my due diligence and make sure that we found the proper attorney. And if for some reason we were wrong, we are not held up or not locked into a contract. We can terminate services at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. Martin.
As far as the finance goes, please, there's some members of the committee that are on the committee now that were not here when Mrs. Mitchell was hired. And you will see in the bills payable, a detailed analysis of every penny, including phone calls, that the attorney would charge. And you'd see the case. The case would be redacted, obviously, so there wouldn't be any names or any way to describe which one it was. But it was, it was every meeting, we got a, a printout of the attorney's bill, and if it was more than one case, then, you know, there'd be separate cases. But all the expenses that were attributed to that bill were listed, as I said, even to the point where, if they make a phone call. Or, or, oh yeah, well, see, before Mrs. Mitchell, there weren't any emails. So I just wanted the committee to know that, because there's some members of the committee that have come on since Mrs. Mitchell came on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As part of the motion, if you, if we'd be so kind to amend it, could we get a quarterly update on the legal service fees? I don't need a descriptor of case or anything like that, just to get a quarterly update. I'm, I'm sure it's in the warrant, but just if we can get a synopsis of it on a quarterly basis, I'd much appreciate it. The maker of motion would amend that motion?
That's, that's fine. Part of the motion.
amended the motion to add that. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, Ms. Doherty?
The recommendation of the superintendent and include the quarterly update of, what was it, Mr. DeMello?
Of fees.
Of the fees.
For services rendered, without being descriptive, just a, a number. Thank you.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, action items. Galligan MSBA project update, Mr. Cabral.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mrs. Moynihan to go over the next two items, as they're related to facilities and operations.
That would be the Galligan MSBA project update and the Taunton Alternative High School MSBA project update. Ms. Moynihan?
Thank you. In the packet, you will see two memos, and the first one that I will review is the Galligan MSBA project update. As you recall, in the September 16, 2020 school committee meeting, members were authorized, the administration, to move forward with the Massachusetts School Business Building Authority, MSBA, on a feasibility study, schematic design for the Harold H. Galligan Elementary School. A motion was made and approved during this meeting, not to exceed $85,000 for this work. The purpose of that feasibility study and the schematic design will be to identify the cost of replacing the doors and windows at Galligan School as part of the MSBA's accelerated repair project, which is also ARP. The MSBA has appointed Hill International to serve as the project management team, and Teague and Bond will serve as the architect for this project. I am pleased to inform you that the Teague and Bond cost for the schematic design feasibility study is just about $50,600, is well within the budget approved by the committee. During the schematic design phase, Teague and Bond will investigate existing conditions, providing a hazardous building materials audit report, preparing the preliminary layouts and scope of work, presenting to the design and budget, performing structural analysis, providing schematic design, and submitting the cost estimate as part of the schematic design submission to the MSBA. So basically, what it is, that just says is that we are on target, and we are coming less than what the committee has approved. So right now, we'll be moving forward. I just attended a meeting with the MSBA yesterday, and slowly going forward with this contract. Any questions about the Galligan MSBA update?
And I would just like to point out, too, just because we're in the schematic design, it does not commit the school department or the city of Taunton to the cost of the entire project. The schematic design will detail the scope and sequence, and then the costs, then from there, that will be additional votes by the school committee and the city, once we know the actual cost. So this is just to find out what's wrong and how much it'll cost.
Ms. Moynihan, continue, please.
Thank you. The next one is an update about the Taunton Alternative High School Accelerated Repair Project. And as you are, may be aware, that the first part of the repair project is complete. We have a brand-new roof on the Alternative High School. So now the second phase of the project is well underway, which calls for the windows and doors to be replaced. If you happen to pass by the school, you will notice some of the existing windows have been removed and abated. As we near the end of the school year, you will notice more demolition in anticipating of installing the new windows and frames, which have already been ordered. Project manager Tom Condal confirmed that the project is ahead of schedule. Although it is difficult to project the completion date, Mr. Condal believes the project will be completed by September. Mr. Condal is aware that the 2020, 2021, 2022 school year begins on September 1, and assures TPS that the project will be near completion, and classrooms and offices will have minimal, if any, disruptions. Any questions about that project update? If you would like a project tour, I can happily schedule that for you, sure.
We will, we will schedule that through the administration and make that aware, and send out an email to, to the members, as long as it's safe to do so. Mr. Cabral, one member asked for a tour of the Alternative High School, and it's during the construction, so, well, you and I, you and I will work on that, getting that information out to the committee and setting that up.
Should be a lot easier now that we don't have all the school year schedules.
Right. Any more questions? All right, that's moving, moving right along. Action item review? I don't see any changes on that, action items? Any questions? Okay, moving right along. Executive session, we'll need a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the Taunton Education Association pursuant to exemption 3, general laws, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, and to reconvene in open session, and the chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session under that term.
So moved.
I heard, I heard a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
President, and I will not attend this session.
Okay, Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
I, I vote yes, but I will not attend the session either.
Okay. Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Sousa.
Yes, we are in executive session.
Let me know if you can.
I'll call the school committee back to order. The chair will entertain a motion now in open session to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Sousa.
Yes. One motion was made in executive session, and the motion was to accept the collective bargaining agreement on, on the memorandum of understanding for in-person learning with the Taunton Education Association. And we should vote on that in, in open session, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the agreement in open session.
Roll call, roll call.
Right, I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Sousa.
Yes. Press time? No press time?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I heard a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night.